Welcome, everyone. Can you please rise for the fudge?
Such allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
President Hammond?
Here.
Vice President Daley?
Here.
Trustee Hedlund?
Here.
Trustee Parr?
Here.
And hello to trustee Clements on the phone.
Got that Peggy. Peggy's joining us via phone line this evening. At this moment, I'd like to take a moment of silence for Mr. Ernest Piermarini, who's a former Haldane Board of Education member, community member, parent of former Haldane students, who passed away on November 21st. Okay, moving on to our regular meeting, the board convened at 6:00 for a building walk-through. Mr. Nabil Bolshos, our new facilities director, took us through and showed us some of the items that are on the B&amp;G proposals for a proposed capital referendum, when we get to that point. So he highlighted a few of those items. Just a reminder, next meeting is workshop meeting to be held on December 18th here in the band room. Dr. Benante.
Thank you, Ms. Hammond, and good evening to our community members who are with us tonight, and also to our Board of Education members. I just wanted to provide an update on a few items for our board. First, we had a very nice superintendent's conference day on Friday. I had a chance to meet with our staff first thing in the morning, and it was a good opportunity for us to discuss some of the district initiatives and our district goals in more detail because they were not, had not yet been adopted by the Board of Education when we first met with the staff on the first days of the school year. So we had a good opportunity to talk about that, answer some questions, and talk a little bit about the work that's to come this school year, in the second part of the school year. And our staff from there broke off into their levels, elementary, middle, and high school, and continued their work under the direction of our building principals. At our next board meeting, I've invited Mr. John LaPlaca to join us. John is the executive for the Alteris Consulting Group, which is a group that provides school safety and security services, or consulting on school matters related to school safety and security to school systems. I had, Ann and I were obviously working on budget, as we tend to do, and realized that we were coming under budget in a few areas. And one of our goals is related to working with an audit of our safety-related practices on campus. And seeing that we were coming under budget in a few areas, I felt that it would be appropriate to see if we could perhaps work with an expert in the field to address some of those areas of need that we've identified this school year, since we may have the opportunity to finance that, as opposed to waiting till next school year. Alteris has a, is pretty renowned in our area for the services that they offer to schools. A cross-section of our safety committee members met with Mr. LaPlaca, and that included Ms. Hammond, about two weeks ago. And additionally, yesterday, I was able to present an overview of the services that they offer to our Health and Safety Committee, and will be forwarding some additional information along to them. But by and large, the folks who've had an opportunity to either sit with Mr. LaPlaca or talk about the services that potentially could be offered to our school system, see this as fulfilling a real need or a void that we have in place here. Many local school districts, including Putnam Valley, Lakeland, Peekskill, Beacon, surrounding districts of Haldane, work with Alteris. They come pretty highly recommended. I've had some experiences with them in my past. So I thought it would be good to have him come and present to the board what service he offers to the school system. He's not really going to make much of a pitch, he's just going to talk about the model and the design, and how, and what his experience has been with, in working with schools. I'll supplement as best I can, and from there, we'll decide on whether or not we need to move forward. It's a BOSI, they cross-contract with BOSI, so it's a BOSI service offering, or we can treat it as such. So it would, it could be incorporated into a BOSI service request. But I didn't want to get too far down the road with that, without bringing the board up to speed, and having a chance to ask questions of John, and what services he offers to school. Heavy focus on staff training within a framework that they provide. And he also provides a lot of support with our state-mandated reporting that we have to do, to New York State for our district emergency response plan, and our building emergency response plans that are required by New York State in their development, so...
We had a safety audit completed recently, and that was through BOSI's, right? So how do these two things connect?
So, Alteris, a part of their service is also to facilitate an auditing process. They certainly would reference, but the service that BOSI's provided to us. But beyond that, then, based on the audit, they will work with your school district to address the defined areas of needs, in a manner that's cognizant of the cultural variables that may be influencing the processes and procedures that you're seeking to improve on campus.
So is Alteris going to do, will they be doing their own audit? And then what, comparing their findings to what BOSI's found?
Yeah, it's a good question for John, because I think, that's a question I asked him. We had an audit completed recently. Do you still feel you have to facilitate your own audit, or can you work off of the audit that is, that was recently conducted for us? And he said, "It's our preference that we do our own audit, and, but we'll also reference the audit that's been completed." And it's simply because it's included in the cost for their service, so that's reason one, and...
And if I recall, when the gentleman from BOSI's presented the findings to us, he also stated that they provide services to then help us implement what they discovered.
They can, yes.
So is, I mean, is there a reason that we're, is it a financial reason, or local?
Financial, not so much. I think, having had some experience with Alteris, and speaking with members of our safety committee, there's a feeling that the level of background expertise of the gentlemen who, and women, who work for Alteris would be of good help to us. Many of them have a law enforcement background, and have direct experience in emergency planning and management, as well as incident response, that, with respect to our training, would go a long way. And I think that would be the key variable.
And also, they don't sell any products. Alteris doesn't sell products. So they make recommendations, they do staff training, and that was primarily the focus that I heard he would take, that their company would take, which, at the NISBA conventions, as we heard, the key to safety is not necessarily all the, I'll call it hardware equipment, it's more the knowledge base and process.
Sure.
Staff awareness.
Staff awareness.
And preparedness is key. One thing, just having walked through the vendor suite at NISBA, luckily, while no one was there, it's the best time to walk through. You can see that there's a variety of organizations, companies now, that provide services to school districts in this realm. But often followed with that is a host of packaged upgrades that you can make to your security system that follow along that. Alteris does not do that, and I think that's an important piece. They will help you if you're considering a particular upgrade, let's say camera systems or visitor management systems. They will talk to you about how various programs have been implemented in other school districts in which they work. They often can facilitate conversations with those school systems. They can help you vet, at no cost, vendors who you're considering bringing in for that work, and that is work we've talked about doing. So having a level of expertise beside us, as we're considering camera upgrades, and where to put the cameras, and visitor management systems, and integration, they know what questions to ask, and it also provides the administration with a little more space to focus on other matters and priorities, and kind of alleviate that concern, because quite frankly, we often go on what we've learned ourselves along the way, but don't necessarily have background, direct background experience in such work.
So, am I sort of hearing that, an opportu, I'm gonna, I don't know how to say this, an opportunity to improve on the BOSI's work is to have people with a background in law enforcement, whereas the BOSI's people didn't necessarily have that?
I think that's the feeling, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, and I want to be respectful of our colleagues at BOSI's.
Yeah, absolutely.
I think they provide a good service.
Yeah.
I just think in this particular case, this is one with an organization that possesses a very, a high level of expertise that would be of good help to us here in Haldane.
Okay.
And that also comes highly recommended from other local school districts with whom they work. So he will be here at our next meeting, John. The proposed, right now, are, I contacted Laura Mitchell at Garrison, and Laura's proposed a joint meeting with Garrison Union Free School District on February 5th. I told Laura I would check that out this evening, if that worked for our board, and then we would proceed in coordinating it.
Was it thought to have it here?
I thought it was actually to have it there.
There.
Yes, so, again, I'm not as familiar with what we've done in the past, I, so...
We've hosted here.
I'll go off of what you would like, obviously, and represent that well.
We've hosted here, but I think joining our friends at Garrison would be a nice change.
What have we done in these meetings before?
So usually, what happens is they like to hear from former Garrison students who attend Haldane, and, as well as the high school principal. We've had a few different ones when we've had these meetings, so Ms. Sniffin, at this point, would basically do a presentation of what it would be like to come to Haldane.
Which is why we've had them here.
Well, because really, they've seen the building how many times now? So that's really the only step, right?
Yeah, in the past, we've considered, the new board members would take like a tour around the building. We did that last year, but this year, the Garrison members would tour around Haldane, but there's no new board members this year.
Okay, right.
So that piece doesn't matter.
I'm not room inside the Garrison.
And yeah, and what we do, often do, is, you know, we sit in a room, and we do presentations. So it doesn't really matter if we're here, or if we're there.
Is it an official board meeting?
It is. It's their business meeting. It's both, yeah. It ends up being a business meeting. Well, they, it depends how our hours is going to fall. Is this a business meeting?
This is a business meeting.
We would need to talk about that, and, you know, you and I can work through that. We have some items related to the budget that are on our calendar, that we had planned to present that evening, that can be pushed either forward or backwards on our budget presentations, both before and/or after the February 5th meeting. So we can work around it, and it sounds like that would be appropriate. I wasn't quite sure myself how much of our business meeting we should shuffle around.
There was a little bit of business done. I think last year, we actually had a workshop meeting scheduled, and they had, not last year, the year prior, because last year was canceled due to weather. Garrison had a business meeting, we had a workshop meeting, so they actually conducted a little bit of business.
Which is like approvals, consent agenda stuff. I mean, it took five minutes.
With an understanding probably to...
Yeah, yeah, we just moved it along, so they could, you know, get some things taken care of. I'm sure that same courtesy could happen.
We may, we may have a few items if, I'd assume, as long as it's okay with the board, that we may want to get, have action on, and go from there. Yeah, I started to watch the one from two years ago.
That was the last, because last year, again, it was...
We didn't do a la, I didn't find one from last year.
It was weather. We had a meeting canceled, and then rescheduled, and it just never worked. Yeah, last year was terrible with weather.
One meeting after another was canceled. I think we, I think it sounds like a nice idea to do it at Garrison, I think it sounds fun.
Great, so I'll get back to Laura, and thank you for that, more information to come. And the only last update I had was just a reminder that Romeo and Juliet will be this weekend, Friday and Saturday, 7 o'clock each night, I believe, yes, 7 o'clock. And that's actually where Andrew is, he's at rehearsal, so he couldn't be with us today.
December 7th.
7th and 8th.
Are the high school students, or maybe you don't know this, I should have asked?
The teaser?
Yeah.
They are not doing the teaser this year.
They're not doing the teaser this year.
It was decided today, actually.
Oh, okay.
I was in a room when that decision was made.
Okay.
There is the video teaser that's being shown, though. So that's what we were facilitating. I shouldn't, Ms. Sniffin won.
Got it.
I feel her presence, if I would have left that off. So in lieu of doing the play, skits, or scenes, we are going to show the video teaser to our student body at various points over the next few days, in the middle school and the high school.
Post it on the website?
Which if you haven't seen it...
It's on YouTube already.
Yeah.
It's on YouTube?
Yeah.
Going to connect it to the website, the Facebook page?
I think it's, I know it's starting to get out there. I just received it yesterday, so it may take another day for it to be out there, but looks great.
I'll forward it.
Okay.
In the meantime.
I will see you.
Okay. So we're ready to move on to our presentation portion?
Sure.
Okay.
I'm going to swing over to the side.
That's fine.
Okay, so tonight, we're going to start our budget process with the rollover budget. This is the shortest budget presentation that you're going to see this cycle.
I'm excited for seeing it.
In December.
Really noted, you're excited to see a budget presentation. I admire that.
We're going to start it off with the definition of the rollover budget, go over some preliminary data that I have already, look at the summaries compared to the 1819 budget, as we'll look at the budget calendar that is on the agenda for approval later this evening, and review the budget parameters. So what is a rollover budget? It's the starting point of our school district budget development. And it answers the question, based on contractual obligations and other items that we know at this point, what would it cost to operate the school district next year with the current staff and programs that we are currently offering? And from here, we take into consideration staff and program changes, other items to shape the budget for the next school year. It could be additions, and it could be deletions, but the rollover budget is the starting point. Right now, what I know is that the health premium increases are projected to increase 3%. Our teacher retirement system projection is an estimate at 9.5%. The teacher retirement system estimates are always really very close to what comes out in actual. I already know that the employee retirement system is a 14.6%. That's the contribution rate. I forgot to add that when I mentioned TRS, is that that percentage is the contribution rate for the salaries that are in the budget. And last year, for the teachers' retirement system, or this year, let me say, 1819, I always get into that this year, last year business, when we're already in the year. It's a 10.62% of the salaries, so it is a decrease. As with the employees' retirement system, it's going from 14.9% for this year to 14.6% for next year, really, no change. Just to point out that what we don't have this early is BOSI's 1920 budget. So typically, if we do this in January, BOSI's budget is in, at least a draft of it, so I have some data with that. So there are some still items that will change.
Just as a quick question on that one. Okay, so the premium increases and increase, the contributions are contributions based on our salary, run rate salary.
Correct.
Both the contribution rates have gone down, salaries will prob, do you expect...
Will go up.
Our salaries are going to go up.
Yes.
Right? And how much of our budget is BOSI's? So of that last bullet that we don't know, like, swaggy.
Eight to 10%?
Fantastic, thank you. That's great.
So, no, surprisingly, or not surprisingly, I was, I was kind of surprised at really how close the rollover budget is this year, as it was to last. It's never really quite been this close. I looked at it, and I went, "Oh, gosh."
I did not. I said, "Oh, my goodness."
Just gave you a couple numbers, though.
But it's really so close. It's in the, you know, 800,000, over $850,000 range. The dollar increase is 8.63, 8.99. That's a 3.59% increase over the final budget for 1819. And just comparison, last year, our rollover budget was a 3.75% increase. So it'll be an interesting budget development season, but it's, there's obviously no surprises here.
And that percentage is on the entire budget, which includes both tax levy, as well as foundation, everything?
Right now, we're talking only about the expenditure side of the budget.
Yes, okay.
So this is, what will the cost be?
Yep, yep.
And Ann?
Yes.
Just out of curiosity, because I know you probably looked at this. You just used the same BOSI's numbers, but what percentage did it go up, do you know, the year prior to this year?
I don't know that, because some parts of the BOSI's budget go down, and some go up. It's not always an increase. It depends, because some of the expenses that are in the BOSI's budget are three-year average of services that we contract with them. So I really wouldn't even want to guess at that point.
That's fine.
So you just kept it flat? I kept it flat. For this proposal? Yes. Here's our budget calendar that you'll be asked to vote on later. There were no changes from last time.
Oh, the governor's proposal is February 5th, is that going to, that's...
Yeah, we have a few things scheduled for that night that I, so as I mentioned, we may have to push those items either to the February 26th agenda, given that, for discussion, given that we have a workshop meeting scheduled for that. Or we can pull, for example, the curriculum and instruction and program budget presentation back to January 22nd, or we can push that up to February 26th. But that's when we'll receive the executive proposal, around that time, from the governor, and that will help us shape our parameters a bit more. The tough thing in developing a school budget, as you know, is that we're trying to build this at the same time what, that key variables are not yet determined. So we'll work on some assumptions at various points, and we'll be candid about that. We're working on an assumption, just like with the BOSI's budget for tonight, and then hopefully, our assumptions are conservative, and if anything, we find that we have a little more money, as opposed to a little less money than we had anticipated along the way.
And what we've done, too, in the past, is added meetings. So if we feel like we need to add a meeting the following week, or something, we could...
Yeah, understood.
Couldn't we do the Garrison thing on February 26th? Because they're going to be dealing with the governor's proposal, too.
So, the 26th, we have reports scheduled already, so this doesn't show, the Board of Ed workshop is just a marker, but we have other business that we have scheduled. We have business scheduled for each meeting, so regardless of when we do the meeting, we're going to, it's going to run, interfere with something we had already planned, but that's okay, we'll adjust based on that, so...
And last year, wasn't the proposal late?
It could be, right.
It came out late, anyway, so who knows?
Yeah, so the governor's proposal typically comes in late January, right? So we were planning on discussing the proposal on the 5th, and how it's influencing, or how it potentially would influence the budget development, based on the parameters we were anticipating at that point, or assuming. So we can discuss that on February 26th. That's not an issue for us. There's no action that we need to take, it's just understanding how would the governor's executive proposal influence our budget development. Now, the legislature will work with that for two, for a bit of time, until we actually know what we have, anyway, in a state aid increase, or hopefully, an increase.
I just feel like that's a big day.
It is, but I remember it being pushed back last year.
Yeah, I remember.
There was a lot of anticipation. I think sometimes it's even, some people have it a couple days before, so it's leaked. Here are the parameters that were proposed at the last presentation. There says nothing new, nothing has been added.
No, nothing's been added. We're just looking, again, to lock this in as soon as possible. So if that's tonight, and folks feel good about it, Ann and I are starting to meet with our building administrative teams this week, to begin the budget development process on that end. So we want to make sure we're real clear about the parameters and the expectations that the board has within this process, so we can, I would say, so we're not doing work in one area that maybe we have to redo down the road. So we're using our time as best possible. So obviously, we're starting with our district's goals and objectives as a base. We want to stay within the tax cap, but the administrative proposal, up to the levy limit, I'm looking for your blessing on that. And we want to operate with the understanding of maintaining current levels of programming for our kids. If there are other items you feel should be considered or discussed, we should certainly go about putting them out there for discussion as soon as possible. Tonight would be great. If you want to carry this over into the next meeting, that's fine, but I wouldn't want to go beyond that.
I think it's important to note that in the past, we have gone up to the levy limit, at least for the past three years that I've been on the board. That's something that if we feel differently about, I think Dr. Benante would like to know.
Yeah, and I had read an article recently, it's not a criticism by any means, that I think that was not clear, that I had made a comment related to not having gone up to the levy limit in previous years, and that's not, not accurate.
That's not the case.
We have, yes. So, but I don't want to take for granted that that's the expectation that you have of the administration. If you felt we needed to be more conservative, obviously, that influences how we enter into these discussions on an administrative level. If you felt that the tax levy limit, generally what it's been in the past, is respectful, fine, I just need to know that, so we can do good work for you in presenting a proposal to you in a couple months.
I'm comfortable keeping, as we've been doing, which is going up to the levy limit.
Thank you for asking, actually.
Well, I shut in the suit.
I just assumed that's what we would always be doing, is going up to the levy limit, but yes, I say yes to that.
I say yes.
Okay. I think I, last time I spoke, that I've worked with boards in the past where they did not want us to go up the levy limit.
Yeah, okay.
They, the levy limit may have been 2.8, but they wanted us to stay right at 2. So, but that was not necessarily Haldane. That was not Halden.
No, because the parameter in the past has been to stay within...
We had a conversation...
Go ahead, Peggy, sorry.
No, it's a problem.
Go ahead, Peggy.
We had a conversation about something similar to this topic a couple of years ago. And my sense then, and definitely my feeling now, is that there remain educational needs in the district that need to be met. And when I see what the rollover, but, you know, how much we had to cut last year, and the possibility that there may, that we may need to find ways to save money this year, you know, leads me to state, this is a long-winded answer, but definitely wanting to go up to the cap. There's just, there's, the needs are great, and the cap is limiting as it is, so definitely.
Thank you. And I think it's important to recognize, I mean, we know that 75% of the budget is what it is. I mean, and we're working with basically 25%.
If that.
If.
It's a sliver.
So it's tough to do anything, in my opinion, below the tax cap levy.
Agreed.
Agreed.
Okay, thank you.
We've also talked about, and I don't know if this falls within board parameters, or if it's more for the building principals and administrators to bring as budget suggestions. But I feel like the board has talked a lot about a few different topics that we want to...
focus on, like, you know, safety and security. We've talked about really making sure that we have everything we need. You know, we added a SPO this year, you know. So, we've talked about that. We've talked about needing to increase our mental health services. That would be an increase to what we currently have. We've talked about, you know, really looking at our technology integration programs, and, and do we have the staff that we need to really succeed in those areas? So, I feel like we've talked about a few topics that need to be addressed, hopefully, this budget cycle, and at least talked about. But I don't, I don't know if you're looking for that from us, or if that's something that you're gonna be looking from your administration.
Definitely from the administration. I'm glad you brought it up. Technology and curricular alignment is something that I've certainly, since in the time that I've been here, I know we've discussed. Looking back at meetings from last year, I, I hear the mental health piece repeatedly as I listen to meetings from last school year, and it's come up this year as well. But I think the genesis for some of those conversations were last year or even beyond. So, when I, but I do think those items are encapsulated in our goals and objectives for, either for this year or within our strategic plan. So, when I say meet district goals and objectives, I would look to include recommendations in those areas as part of future presentation that I feel would have the biggest impact to help meet our long-term goals and objectives for our kids.
Okay.
And I'll be candid if I think we can do it, and if I think we can't, given what, you know, we may or may not be working with this year in terms of funding. Given that it's, if there were no tax cap, I think, quite frankly, it would be pretty easy to establish a shared understanding that we need to make improvements in certain areas, or we need to make additions in certain areas. That would still be very respectful of taxpayer dollars. That wouldn't be much further beyond the tax cap, but that's a hard, you know, it's a hard number. So, I appreciate your support of going at least up to that number. I think we may be able to do a couple of things this year, depending on, you know, the, how some variables shape up. But I will include it as part of that first bullet.
Okay.
And I think it was a little bit of a different process last year, and we were more involved. I think this is where you were going. And I agree, some of those discussions happened amongst the board with administrators. But I think that's why is that your administrative team proposes to you, you propose to us.
Yes.
Yeah.
We have two meetings this week, and they'll be productive, and it's a messy process. We wanna try to do our best to control, as Anne spoke to you, you know, there's a lot of variables that come to shape as you're building it, and it's all the more reason why the process has to be really clear for the things that are within your control. So, that's the, the mindset that we have going in.
Right, good.
Just, so just as a quick question, in generating the rollover, the, the things that were changed were expectation on salaries, expectation on the retirement contributions, and healthcare.
Correct.
Fantastic, great. So, nothing programmatic and nothing like utility costs or anything like that is nothing, it's all basically, it's all basically personnel-related? Is it all basically personnel-related? People-related?
No, there's, because there's program components embedded into that, like BOSI's service requests and...
Although that's not, that hasn't been updated yet.
Well, we rolled it over as if we were doing everything we were contracting with BOSI's this year the same way next year.
In the, at the same amount, though. So, the only things that have been increased are frankly, costs related to people.
Yep.
Okay.
And that's seventy-six percent of the budget, so.
Absolutely.
And the TR, well, TRS was a reduction, but the ERS contribution, there was a sliding creep.
Yeah, both reductions.
They were both reductions.
Yeah, yeah, sorry.
But your salary base is going up, so that...
Right. I mean, I, I increased FICA and Medicare, because that's a percentage of this, of the payroll.
Yeah, yeah.
And steps increase.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And we have knowledge of some retirements coming up, but did you include the breakage numbers that you know of in this, these, this rollover?
No, because rollover is current staff.
Current staff.
Right. And when we go into proposal one, breakage is taken into account at that point.
Great.
We ask questions and answers, or we did this along the way, but if there's any others...
Are there any questions or comments from the public at this time? Okay. Okay, so if there are no questions from the public, we'll move on to the remainder of our agenda. Item F are the information reports from October and November for our viewing, and they will be approved next meeting. Consent agenda minutes. May I have a motion?
Motion. Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Consent agenda financial. May I have a motion?
Motion. Second.
Any questions or comments?
I did, I had a question.
Sure, go for it.
I had two questions that Anne so nicely responded to, but I'd asked them in public form. So, because I think that it was useful for me to know. So, the first question was on the appropriation status report, and I noticed that, I think it was the tuition line, budget line went up substantially, and my question was, why? And you answered it very nicely, to remind me.
So, when you look at the appropriation status report, on the first few columns, there's the original budget, which is what's voted upon. There's an adjustment column, and then there's the revised budget. The adjustment column are totals. It could be many changes within a line item. Usually, it's budget transfers from one to another. You're not gonna be able to trace that. An increase to the budget would be prior year encumbrances that were open at the end of the year. So, on June thirtieth, if there are still encumbrances outstanding, they're rolled over and they increase the current year's budget by those encumbrances amounts. In this case, that was, it was the latter. It was actually a total of seven different outstanding encumbrances for tuition. And it could be that we didn't get the final bills from programs yet, or, and this was a tuition outside special services tuition code.
Yep.
Could be because we didn't get the bill yet, or it could be, well, it's both that we didn't get the bill, but one could be a bill that we know that it might just be the May or June bill that hasn't come in yet. In some instances, we don't get billed from some programs for one or two years later. So, I wanna carry those encumbrances from the year that they should have been charged in forward. Otherwise, you're using current year's money for last year's bill.
Right.
And then you might get this year's bill on time.
Got it.
So, we wanna make sure that it's in.
So, that was really useful for me, because I noticed that, that tuition, the budget line item went up substantially, almost doubled. And I was like, how'd this happen? And the answer was, these are old bills from a previous year that we're now adding into this budget for this year based on money that we've carried over. Is that...
That's correct.
Okay, perfect. And the second question that I had, because it was interesting, was on when would we ever expect to pay for ACA? Because I noticed a line item in there that we budgeted for, but it hasn't been tapped for, to best of my understanding, it hasn't been tapped for that purpose yet, and you had a lovely...
It has not. The Affordable Care Act, when it was started, there was so much confusion and it was, it was really, they, they didn't even have the guidance yet that was all published, and we had to comply with what they thought was gonna happen. Consultants came in and talked to actually, at my business official meetings, to, to try to help us make sense of the, of the guidelines and what we needed to do. It turns out that there are penalties that the district would have to pay if an employee went to the marketplace and received a subsidy on their tax return. Only, the penalty was based on their entire tax return from all sources. And I don't know where everyone works, you know, if they're not only working for Haldane. So, there was a formula that we were provided, and, and we went back and forth to try to, to calculate what would be a conservative amount to put into a code, should we have a penalty come our way, that we didn't even know how much or, or if it was gonna happen. That's still in the budget, because the Affordable Care Act is still, is still alive. So, we, luckily, we have not had to use it. So, if we have an expenditure line item like that and we don't use it, it's like any other expenditure where we don't spend everything. We can either reclassify it and use it in another unanticipated area, or it goes into fund balance.
Right. Thank you. I appreciate that. And for me, that was very useful just to understand the, the fiscal prudence, right? So, we get bills years after they're, the, the expense has been incurred, but we've captured the money to pay for them after the fact, and that we're also budgeting correctly for something we may, what may happen, but we need to have a budget in the budget to do it. So, thank you.
Thanks for asking those questions, because those were questions that I used to ask Anne, and then I, one board member used to say, there's always one, there's always one, but kindly he said it. So, thank you. But those line items have now been in the budget for several years, and I don't have to ask the question anymore. But thank you, I appreciate the fact that you are asking questions. Margaret, did you wanna ask your question?
I can. I sent it, I sent it to Anne. So, I saw a lot of budget transfers here, and I just asked what the, what the amount, what the threshold was that you had to have a board approval before you made the budget, budget transfer.
Okay, that is, it's a practice. It would be too specific to really be a, a good place for it. Would be in policy, and that's not a good place for something where there's a specific number that could change year to year. Forty thousand dollars is the amount that if I'm going to recommend a budget transfer in excess of that, that we'd have a discussion, and the board would actually have to have a, a recommendation to approve that, a resolution.
And that's been that number for as long as you can remember?
Ten years ago, it was thirty thousand.
I was gonna say.
And...
It feels like a big number. It feels like a big number.
It was, it was thirty thousand, and then when the controller came in in twenty fifteen and did the audit, part of the areas that they wanted us to focus on was our budget transfer procedure. And at that time, the discussion, it was our action plan to address the items that they brought up. We talked about it being forty thousand dollars. It could, because it could be, you know, a person is in the wrong code, and I have to transfer a salary, or...
Or what happens when it's one person and they're in two different codes, because I've asked this question.
Right.
And it has to get transferred.
And it is, all budget transfers are approved after the fact.
Right.
You know, so every year, every month, you're getting that month's budget transfers.
No, it just, I wasn't concerned about any of them in particular. I just saw, I just saw a big number, and I went, oh, what's the number? Yeah. So, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Consent agenda personnel. May I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Any questions or comments?
I read it. I read it.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Unfinished business. This is the second read of the policy review for sexual harassment, and I know you had some thoughts, John, so if you'd like to share.
As to, okay, so the way I read this, it's fairly straightforward, but there's a definitional piece up front, and I'll just read it, and then I'll throw out my question. So, the definition says, gender discrimination is defined as pervasive and or severe conduct intended to intimidate or demean a person or persons of the other gender, or that which treats a person or the other gender differently in the workplace because of his or her gender. So, my question was, is there a state mandated, I, I understand a lot of this is state-directed language. Is there, is there a state definition for gender? Because I think it, while it, in some cases, it may be binary, my sense is that that definition of gender is shifting, and I would want the policy both to recognize that, to be able to accommodate from a, what is definitely discrimination, based on any number of definitions of gender, and want any student who'd be reading this to feel like their situation was accommodated in the policy.
I think it's a really good question.
And this would be the paragraph where we would seek to identify this. So, as a state
establishes law, and then perhaps model policy accompanying by that law, it's usually defined in terms of the minimum expectations for a board to, to adopt, a district to adopt. So, we can exceed those expectations as a board. We just have to make sure we meet the minimum expectation. So, John's question certainly applies in this case, where we could, I believe, to be more inclusive and to make sure that there's a level of, of that language is here that would encapsulate any student who identifies as gender fluid in any way, modify this paragraph in, in a way that, that is inclusive of that. So, I, you know, I wish Peggy and Jen and I were, you know, at the table here and not do this on camera.
Yeah, we must, we must have gone out.
But I do think something along the lines of gender discrimination is defined as pervasive and or severe conduct intended to intimidate or demean a person or persons who identify as the opposite gender, or that which treats a person or the person who identifies as the other gender differently in the workplace or school building because of his or her identified gender. I think it's the term identity or gender identity that we wanna...
And pass it along to Mr. Lambert here for his review.
Well, Mike and I already talked about this, but I certainly would. I don't know how that influences the adoption of the policy this evening.
Well, but I'm, I'm actually wondering if there needs to be, since this is the definitions section.
Correct.
Perhaps we need to somehow define gender, or what our working understanding of gender is. And perhaps that somehow is what you've stated, that a gender is, you know, determined by the individual, you know, et cetera, et cetera.
I think you get it.
And then you can use that sentence the way it is.
Sure.
But we have to define what, what we see as gender.
I, I think, I think you get in trouble, not in trouble. I think there's a challenge with using words opposite or other, which implies that there are only two. So, different may be a better choice of words.
Right, but...
Gender neutral.
Right, but what I'm, what I'm saying is maybe it's just the gender is, is as the person defines it. Do you know what I mean? That it's person, it's individual-specific.
Yes.
So, if they define themselves as one gender or the other, then there would be an other. But if they can define themselves as fluid, then there wouldn't be an other.
Correct, but then if you say...
So, it's somehow, though, it's up to the individual how they define gender.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I'm just saying, persons of the other gender implies that there's only one, and there's the other, and there's no in-between.
Yes.
Yes.
So, that, that's, that's the...
I hear you.
Yeah, all right. So, I don't know the writing.
For process sake, I'm wondering if it may be best to adopt the policy as is. I continue to work with it. We could always revise the policy moving forward on with the, I think, expectation that was defined this evening and bring it back.
That's right.
But I wouldn't wanna go any longer without, without the policy in place, because right now, are we good with that?
Yes.
Good. So, I'll do my homework, and then we'll bring it back for review.
Is Julia gonna read the resolution?
Read the resolution?
Thank you.
Okay.
We have resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education hereby adopts the attached policies, workplace sexual harassment and sexual harassment policy for students.
May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Just a quick comment on that.
Sure.
So, as we adopt policies, I don't know what the practice has been in the past on an administrative level, but I just want to make you aware that following this, I'll send the policy out to all staff to notify them that this policy has been updated by the Board of Education, and that it should be reviewed by them, and any questions can be forwarded to me. I think it's really important for policies like this, in comparison to other policies, which may be more mundane.
which may be more mundane, this one's important. So, the staff will be notified of this by the end of the week, and then it's on them to review.
And actually, the code of conduct is going to get updated as well, I presume?
Yeah, our code of conduct, I don't know what the last communication with the board was from the committee on that, because I just, I think I just reviewed the last committee meetings minutes today, which means they'll be on our next agenda. But they're in the process of redrafting the code of conduct, as we discussed earlier this summer. We had hoped to have a full rewrite to the board in December. It's probably looking more like January or February, just because it's taking some time. But yeah, that'll be reviewed.
Okay. So, the other piece to those is that there's a sexual harassment policy for students. So are you thinking the same process? You would get that out to families, students somehow?
And to college.
So that's why I was thinking the code of conduct.
Oh, putting it like within the code of conduct, yeah, oh, I see. So it had to be a separate initiative.
Correct.
Gotcha.
I'm sorry, I didn't specify that while I was speaking, so that's...
All right. Approval of the Haldane School Budget Calendar for 2019-2020. I cannot believe we're doing this in December, but go for it, Julia. Be it resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education hereby approves the Haldane School Budget Calendar for 2019-2020 as presented. May I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, just a reminder that our second half of the board retreat will be on Friday, February 1st, from 5:00 to 9:00, held at Winter Hill Conference Center, where I believe our friends from BOSI's will be joining us.
John McCarthy and Lynn Allen are looking forward. We've already had our planning meeting.
Excellent.
They're way ahead of the game.
Perfect. Thank you. Okay, new business, Ms. Formilaro?
Oh, yes, this is the CSC CPSC recommendations, and the recommended action is, be it resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education hereby approves the recommendations of the Committee on Special Education and Preschool Special Education as presented.
May I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any communication from our public this time? No. Okay, with that said, this adjourns the regular session. The board will be convening in executive session for the purpose of discussing proposed, pending, or current litigation, where no action will be taken. We most likely will not be reconvening.
You're going to make a motion for that?
I'll make a motion to move into executive session.
Second.
Second, but can I ask a question first? Remind me what's on our workshop agenda for the next one?
Safety and security.
Safety and security. Thank you very much.
Which is why Mr. Laplaca will be here.
Great, good, good.
I'll talk a little bit, and then hold.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Good night.